Welcome to your City Commission Study Session. Today is Tuesday, November 17th, 2020. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 7:00 PM and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live in accordance with Kansas Open Meetings Act. The meeting can be viewed on Channel 2 and via Facebook Live. The public is encouraged to view the meeting using one of those options. The Leavenworth City Commission meeting is open to the public with limited seating capacity to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 face coverings and social distancing as required to attend the meeting. To attend the meeting in person, email C. Williamson at firstcity.org no later than 4:00 PM on November 17th to reserve a seat. Seats are available on a first-come, first-served basis. If you are not attending the meeting but would like to submit questions on an agenda item to be read during the discussion on that topic, email your comments or questions to C. Williamson at firstcity.org no later than 6:00 PM on November 17th. We have four items on the study session agenda for this evening, and we are going to begin with a semi-annual report from the Leavenworth Public Library.
I believe we have Library Director Matt Nohjanen here tonight.
Matt, are you there?
Yes, sir. I am here. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Welcome.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm happy to be here tonight. I wish I could be there in person, although I haven't had a haircut since April, so I look a little shaggy. I'd like to report that the landscaping installation at the library went very smoothly, and it looks great. Communication with Brian Bailey at Parks and Rec was equally great. He kept us up to date at all times. The crew was very responsive to any questions or comments and answered very, very promptly. So it's too bad that we don't have the regular volume of traffic through our front doors. I think the whole community would like to see and would be very, very proud and happy to see the definite upgrade of the appearance of the library. So again, thank you very much. It went very well. And as you're probably aware, I follow the number of active cases and other factors surrounding COVID very closely, and since the Fourth, the number of active cases has increased dramatically as well has the number of deaths. So at this point, we do not foresee an immediate further opening of the library. We're going to continue to be open to the public from 9:00 to 11:00 AM, Monday through Saturday, and then do curbside service from 11:00 until 7:00, Monday through Thursday, and then 11:00 to 5:00 on Friday and Saturday. There are a couple other libraries in the immediate area that have been discussing the possibility of going back, taking a step back into only doing a curbside service. I have not received any confirmation of that, but they're equally concerned about the rapid growth in the number of cases and complications and deaths. Now, since the countywide closing of facilities in March, the Leavenworth Library has circulated the second-highest number of materials in the county. The Basra Library has done more business, but they have the advantage of a drive-through window. I'm sure when they installed that, they thought it was a good idea, and now they take it as a great idea. We're also enclosed in additional two weeks in August, which resulted in a further reduction in the number of physical items we circulated compared to other libraries. The good news is the use of digital material is up 55% compared to last year, and the number of our new digital content users increased by 19%. So for Overdrive, which is the vendor that provides a lot of our ebooks and audiobooks, we've loaned 13,486 of those items, which is a 40% increase over the same period last year. Uplah, which is a lot of streaming video, but audio, e-audiobooks are the number-one choice of those users. That's up 38%. And Canopy, the system we launched in April, has been growing slowly. The most important, I think the most effective marketing we're able to do for any and all of these things is in-person. And since the library has been up in a limited number of hours since then, that service hasn't taken off the way we expected. But we still have 127 people that have joined Canopy and are using, borrowing those movies. During this time, we have done our absolute best to sort of turn the frowns upside down, so to speak. We have gained new skills and started using technology in new ways. We launched online story hours in May, and they have been viewed over 4,931 times, which is not bad. If we added that to the number of people we typically see at live programs, our attendance basically would have doubled. So we're hoping that this also is an opportunity that we can use to reach kids who can't make it to our live programs but have now an easy access from home. We're developing ways for people to apply for library cards online. I hope to have that up and running hopefully in the next month or so to make it more convenient for people to get a card that they can use for our digital services and then come to the library when we're open to present the ID and other proof of address if we need to issue a full-service card. Right now, 17,635 people have Leavenworth Library cards, and 109 of those have chosen a digital-only card. So again, the use of libraries and the way that libraries serve their communities is definitely changing. That trend is not slowing down. We had a book-or-treat at the library from the 26th of October through Halloween. Kids could come into the library, go to, knock on two doors, so to speak, go to our children's department and our main desk and receive free books, and we gave away 634 books to children under 12. Now, usually, well, we usually have a Santa at the library that comes to see the kids. I'll give them a book in December. This year, it's not going to happen. So we're looking at a YouTube Santa visit and a week in December where kids can come to the library for a free Christmas gift book. Again, that'll be targeting kids from 12 and under. We hosted a Zoom meeting last week to discuss training and public service for the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program in 2021. Typically, we serve anywhere between 250 and 300 people who come to the library and have their taxes prepared by volunteers in one of our meeting rooms. And we're going at it from two directions. If health data improves and those rooms are open, the volunteers will be trained at the library. However, face-to-face appointments will not take place, but most of the volunteers who work for VITA, for that Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program, prefer not to be sitting across the table from people. So the idea is that the participants would drop off their, all their information to get their taxes completed at the library. Volunteers could then either work there or take them home and then bring the completed forms back to the library next week for the patron to pick up. The same people do this at the school district, and that has worked very well there. It'll be new, because most of the people that use our services have traditionally, you know, they're used to doing the face-to-face, so we're hoping that it won't make users uncomfortable. But given the state of health affairs, there really isn't any way around it. I'm really hoping everything improves, but you never know. So we want to be prepared. We were in the middle of the program last year when the shutdown came. We started doing those appointments in February, planned to carry them all through February and March, but then all public facilities were closed for the month. So last year, there was already an interruption in that whole service, so we're trying to do it in a way that will be feasible, functional, and as secure as possible. Because it's going to get dark pretty soon, and because our, I don't know if you've been to the library to see the book drop that we have placed sort of in the alley as an easy way for people to drop off books without having to park their car, get out of their car in front of the door that we're using for our curbside service, we're going to relocate that portable book drop to a place directly in front of the main entrance so that it will make it easier for staff to empty. They won't have to walk up that hillside when it gets slippery or after dark. And our admin team right now, we're drafting a new three-year tech plan, and we should have it to the Board of Trustees, on the Board of Trustees' agenda in January. It's a requirement for, it's a good idea, we've always done it, but it's also a requirement by the Northeastern Kansas Library System. It's one of the boxes we have to check off in order to qualify for our development grant that represents a substantial funding clause for us on a manual basis. Generally, it consists of making sure that we maintain all of our computer network equipment, that it's in running order, up to date, available, and that we look forward to, over a three-year period, to the kind of technology we want to implement, add, adapt, or again, just keep maintaining and brought up to speed. So again, that's something we've been working on for about three months now, and we should have it on the Board's agenda in January. And that is the core of my report. I guess I'd be glad to answer anyone's questions if you have any.
Thank you, Director Nohjanen. Any commissioners have questions or comments for our Library Director?
Yeah, I don't have any.
Mr. Nohjanen, very good report, good rundown. I did have a question in terms of personnel. Are you able to keep your positions filled? I know it's a different model in terms of delivering your services over the last six, seven, or eight months, but how are things looking with respect to keeping your personnel onboard?
So far, we have had, we have not had any problems budget-wise in keeping staff employed, basically. We have used this time as a way to do a lot of internal things that are very hands-on and very labor-intensive that are really difficult to do when the building is open. We have shifted our whole collection. We have weeded both collections. We have done a lot of work to organize, to train, and do other internal things that will help improve library service, and we'll get some of our, a couple of our new employees really ready to go when and if we go to full-time. I know they're, it's going to be strange. It's been since March that we've actually had a regular, normal day at the library. We want everybody to be prepared and not get caught off guard when that happens, and I'm hoping that happens soon.
I had a question on those free books. Were they new books or were they, you know, slightly-used books or, you know, the books that were given to the kids?
We purchase very inexpensive books, bulk rate. We get them through Scholastic Publishers. So just like at Christmas when we give away books, we want kids to have quality books that are age-appropriate, board books with the little ones, so we have a variety of board books, picture books, and what kids call chapter books. So everyone gets a brand-new book when they come to the library. The average, about under, I want to say it's about maybe $2 per item by the time you get the discounts and the really good prices that they offer at Scholastic. And they're not, they're books that kids would recognize and enjoy, so they're not obscure books that are poorly illustrated or poorly written or just, you know, some publishers trying to get rid of. They really do represent important authors, recognizable authors, themes, and illustrators that kids know and enjoy.
Good. Is there something the commissioners, the commission can do, or do you have anything that you'd like to else share with us in terms of our support for the public library in Leavenworth?
Not at this point, no. I did get an email from the Finance Department. I'd like to express our appreciation for the support you provided through the CARES grant dollars. I know those costs are not going to decrease over time. Went down to buy new boxes of gloves, and they were about double in price from what I had paid just a couple of weeks before. So that revenue is really going to help us continue to purchase personal protective and cleaning supplies and equipment.
Good. Well, thank you for the rundown. It's obvious that you've had to adapt your model for delivering all the great services from the library, and you've done that very, very well. We appreciate you coming by to give us a semi-annual update, and I'd like, on behalf of the commission, to send my best to your staff and as they carry on and do their very best to deliver the good public library services to the citizens. So please give them our best.
I will. We appreciate your support and your, both moral and financial, and look forward to keeping up our end of things and again, hope that eventually someday soon we'll all get back to what is a fairly normal course of events.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. The next agenda item is a semi-annual report from the President of the University of St. Mary, Sister Diane Steele. Hello, Sister. You're on mute. Unmute. Sister Diane, unmute yourself.
There you go.
Hello, Sister Diane. Good to see you.
Hello there. Thank you for inviting me to offer a brief update, and I also want to thank you for your support from the Sparks Money. That $25,000 is very much appreciated. To date, we have spent over $200,000 testing our students. We have been doing, testing consistently large groups of students. And on top of that, we have been spending money keeping them in the hotels when they were, had to be quarantined. So to date, we have spent over $500,000 dealing with, and that doesn't count the gloves, the masks, the plexiglass, and we buy hand sanitizer by the gallon. But so very much, we're very grateful for your support in that. And I want to give a shout-out to the Leavenworth Public Health, to Jamie Miller and his team. I could not have asked for a better partner through this. He's done a fantastic job. You know that when I have him on speed dial on my phone, between his team and our team, they talk daily, they compare spreadsheets daily, and he was always there to offer advice. I'm an educator, a theologian, not a physiologist by training, so it was great that Jamie would always say, I'd say, "Jamie, what should we do? Jamie, what do you think we ought to do?" So just kudos to him. He's done a great job for us. You may have heard that we went remote starting Monday. We had another surge here. We found we had a surge after Labor Day, and we had a surge after Halloween, and thank God, we'll be remote. We're finished by Thanksgiving. So this is our last week. We are in finals right now. Majority of our students have headed home because we took finals remote. And so the kids who are not quarantined or over in the holiday ends that are positive, we have sent home because we want to make sure they were safe getting there. And so we are finished. And we also made the hard decision to cancel our winter, postpone our winter sports until we come back in February. The two sports in question would have been the basketball teams and the wrestling teams. And we just really felt with the surge in the state of Kansas that we didn't think we could do that safely for our students or our coaches, so we have postponed all of our games and matches. So we did, however, run cross-country. They finished on Saturday. Their season is finished, and I'm happy to report that the two cross-country teams won the conference, and the boys won it for the eighth year in a row. So we're not real good at football, but we wrest back. So they've done a, they've done a great job there. Also proud to announce that our Masters in Social Work is moving through the higher learning process, so we will be launching a Bachelor's in Social Work this fall, and our Masters in Social Work will launch the next fall. Our Doctorate in Occupational Therapy is coming right along, and we will accept students and start classes in June. That's our third doctoral program. The Doctorate in Education is up and running, and our oldest doctorate is the Doctorate in Physical Therapy. So they're all up, running, and moving. Proud to say that our nursing programs have been reaccredited and reaffirmed for the next 10 years by CCNA. Doing great, great pass rates, very excited about that. And so to support all of our allied health programs, we are in the midst of investigating putting in cadaver lab on campus. So we're right now building the business plan and deciding the best location and doing the fundraising to have a cadaver lab on campus. And once we get it, we would be glad to share it with our high schools as well, because there's nothing like working with the real thing. If you really want to know what a heart, how a heart works, it's best to see a human heart. So we're very excited that we're going to be able to add that as a teaching tool. So it's very good for us there. Things are going to be very quiet here. Our students are going to be gone until February 2nd. Class starts February 2nd. We may or may not bring back the athletes to start. It really depends on how COVID progresses, because our first concern is always safety. And as you know, we lost a student to COVID. One of our Masters in Athletic Training passed away about four weeks ago now. She was down in Kansas City, healthy 22-year-old. So that was a very sobering event for us, and again, helped us reinforce that this disease does not prejudice young or old, and you don't know who, how it's going to affect you. So I have to say that this semester has primarily been consumed with dealing with COVID. I am grateful that our teachers and our faculty are able to switch back and forth readily. We have a management system called Engage that most things are on and they can flip back and forth. So that has worked well for us, that we have continued to be able to educate students. It has challenged us when we want to build community. It's very hard to build community when you have to be socially distanced, so that's been a challenge, but we've made it through the semester, for which I am most grateful, and our dearly beloved students are primarily gone home. And so COVID has just really eaten our lunch this semester. We've gotten through the year, but we're really hoping for that vaccine. And any influence you have in how things are prioritized, we want to make sure our congregant living, our residence halls are considered essential and hit the first tier because they live so closely together. We will be asking that all of our residents and athletes do get vaccinated as soon as possible. And we think with that, combined with continued testing, we're hoping for a better semester. So the sooner that vaccine comes, the better. And I would be glad, Mr. Chairman, to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Sister Diane. Any questions or comments from my fellow commissioners?
I have one comment.
Yes.
Sister Diane, Paul Kramer, City Manager here. I'm looking at a draft of a recruitment poster titled "Heroes in Our Community," and it is our police officers who are alumni of your great university. And I see this poster in front of me. We have currently four police officers, two detectives, and two sergeants who are proud alumni of your university. So the partnership extends much beyond certain things we do with the City Commission that you are, you account for about 15% of our police force. So I just want, I thought that was neat. I saw the poster for the first time today.
That's great. No, that's a, that's a.
Well, to be frank, yes, they were all out here picture-taking. I feel very old because I caught them.
Any, any, that's a.
And we're also in the fore of the Sheriff's Department.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks very much for that update, Mr. Kramer. Any other comments or questions for Sister Diane? Yes, Commissioner Preisinger?
Sister Diane, Commissioner Preisinger. When you talk with other universities, when you think of the vaccine that is coming, hopefully in the first quarter, will there be requirements by universities for students if they live on campus in a residence hall that they must take the vaccine or else they're persona non grata in the residence halls? Or have you had those discussions with some of your peers yet?
My guess is it's going to be split. My guess is the schools that are actively testing will demand the vaccine, and the schools that are not testing, I'm not sure they're going to do the vaccine or require it, but again, I don't know. My colleagues are struggling to get through COVID right now. I'm, we're the first ones to put together a vaccine policy, so we're pushing ahead.
What is, what is your vaccine policy?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. What is your vaccine policy? Maybe I missed it. Are you, have you put one together yet?
We're going to make people be vaccinated.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Good. That's good.
Okay.
Yeah, our students have done a great job wearing masks. We test regularly, usually about 200 to 300 students a week plus faculty and staff, so we've done our best to stay on top of it, that a vaccine is going to be what puts us over the edge.
Good.
Great.
Thank you.
Sister Diane, when did the semester start for the undergraduates? Back in August sometime?
August 2nd.
Okay, okay. I got it. Well, listen, any other comments or questions from commissioners? I'd like to thank you, Sister Diane, for coming and giving us that very good, excellent rundown. I know it's been very, very challenging. I think you've done a wonderful job, and I know that there was learning, had to be learning that was going on, but I know that's a challenge with everything in terms of the challenges of COVID-19. But please pass along our best and our thanks from the commission to your staff and faculty for all their hard work in adapting to COVID-19 and all the challenges that COVID-19 brought to your university and the city and our county and our state and our, and our nation. So thank you very much.
All right, and thank you all very much. Thanks for your support. Appreciate it.
Take care, Sister.
Okay, the next agenda item is a semi-annual report on the convention and visitors bureau, and I believe that's Ms. Kristy Lee.
Good evening, Commissioner, or Mayor Griswold and Commissioners. Thank you for having me tonight. I guess I can resonate with most of the reports so far. You know, as far as COVID, it's, it's out there, and it, as you all know, are pretty much aware that it's devastated the tourism industry as well. So just some basic updates for you tonight and that, and what we've been doing, and then on the national travel industry in general. COVID is all over the news and definitely in the travel industry, and just since the pandemic began a little over on March 1st, the travel industry, they figure, has resulted in losses of over $424 billion to the US travel economy, and which equates to about $54.5 billion in federal, state, and local tax revenue just since March 1st. So with this new surge coming, again, we had a big dip in our transient guest tax that kind of hit us in March, in April, and a little bit into May and that. So going forward, it's, we'll just have to wait and see how this second wave really affects our transient guest tax dollars going forward. The trends so far, I mean, air travel was increasing just a little bit there for a while. However, it's still 60% below 2019 levels. Road travel is what they said, you know, has been happening this year and that. However, it's still 11% lower than it's been, but however, most people are traveling by road. The 69% or so of the people are considering winter or outdoor recreation through the holidays and that versus indoor events and that. The meetings industry as well has taken a huge hit. 71% of the planners are still saying that they're unlikely to attend conventions or hold conventions until COVID is more under control, and most of the planners in general aren't even thinking about face-to-face meetings yet until the second half of next year. So even, we'll have to wait to see where that vaccine hits and where all it takes place first, so. Just factors preventing some of the travelers or what the sentiment is as far as traveling. Obviously, everyone's still concerned about spreading or contacting the virus and that to the tune of about 53%. And then on down the line, health and safety protocols unclear, just concerned about your health, giving it to others and everything. So like I said in my report back in April, there's just, there's a ton of information out there now that goes over all of this monthly and that, so this is just kind of a cumulative report as of now. So some of the latest findings, I guess, from destination analysis on the travel sediment study that I found interesting, they are saying right now that about 31.6% of the people are going to be shopping online this year for holiday, holiday gifts and that, which I think is going to definitely hurt our retailers around here. We've been trying to really come and help local, promote local in that this year and get people out, moving around locally and that, and get, you know, safely get back into some of the stores and shop and that. But I think it's really, you know, we'll see where this lands again, but I do think this is going to hurt our retailers again this holiday season. And two of the things that, that they measured as far as people when they, that do make them feel a little bit more comfortable about going into a store is if the face masks are required for customers and that the retail staff and that, or restaurants people are wearing masks, and that, that does tend to help as far as them feeling comfortable. So if you're interested in any more statistics, let me know, because I can fill your basket and that. So just some other ones, quick ones that they were doing. The state, let's see, overall sediment about tourism, the, they're still saying that tourism, 64% that it's good for the state, and 57% are still saying that it's good for the local economies and that, and that 55% are still saying that tourism outweighs the negative impacts. So. Um, so there's a, a ton of quality of life involved, development and growth, um, economy and, and that as well. So like I said, if you'd like some more information on statistics and numbers, let me know. Um, but moving on to the state of Kansas, they've adopted a new logo and also a new tagline and uh, it's to the Sotars and they revealed that to us uh, in October at the um, Tourism Conference, which was supposed to be held in liberal and then at the, I think in mid-September they called it and it was virtual this year. So they held it on Wednesdays um, for a couple hours on the 7th, 14th, 21st and 28th. So that was interesting, but I think they had a good turnout. Um, I think that there's about 125 people on the Tourism Conference virtual meeting while they were holding it and that, and they tried to stick pretty close to what they had, would stick to as if you were there in person. So overall, I think it went over, it went over pretty well. Um, they are going to be updating their website, so uh, we've been busy updating our events and our listings on their website because supposedly when it rolls over, it's all gonna roll over at once and so we've been updating the photos, everything online and that, so it's gonna be nice. I think it's going to be a real nice, fresh look for their site as well and hopefully it will be more user-friendly for the general public. Uh, total visitor spend, spending um, for the, for 2019 was um, seven point, what was it? I'm trying to lick my finger. Seven, seven point three billion. Golly, 7.3 billion in uh, total visitor spending for 2019. They break it down into transportation, food and beverage, lodging, retail and recreation and air, so um, over a wide range of sectors and that, but that's uh, a still, we were on the, we were continually increasing year by year, so we'll see what uh, 2020 comes in at. But the hotel report then for 2020, year-to-date occupancy across the state was 41%. Um, average daily rate was $77.16 and revenue per available room was $31.75. So compared to right below it, I put 29 figures just kinda as a reference for you, just um, to kinda show you where we're at this year.
Ms. Lee, explain real quickly again, revenue uh, per available room?
Revenue per available room basically is your occupancy, how many people are staying in the whole, in the hotel versus how many rooms you have that are empty. So revenue per available, if you, does that make, so if you sell.
For example, if you have a hundred rooms and it's a hundred dollars a night, there's $10,000 in theory and if there's only uh, 31 people there, you only, you average $31 a room or something like that.
Through the whole, yeah, through all of your rooms and that, so.
I got it.
Right, right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Pretty low, that's pretty low.
Yes, it is, it's pretty low. It's hard, yeah, hard for them to stay afloat with those kinda numbers. Um, so then our Leavenworth updates for you, the transient guest tax here locally actually um, is ahead of the state and its uh, um, occupancy, we're ahead of the national right now, so I'm pleased with our occupancy here. So as you can see, it's uh, based at about 56% right now and we were at 67 last year. Um, our average daily rate is at 106, um, and our RevPAR is at 59, so we're kinda holding pretty well compared to the state, you know, at 41% and US average right now is at 45.6. So um, we're holding our own right now as far as transient guest tax goes, so I was, I was pleased to see that.
Yeah.
And then over on the left-hand side, I did include um, the total revenue right now is a, you know, 5.8 million, which equates to about 55,000 room nights and then transient guest tax collected has been um, about 36,000 room nights at 307,647.41, so.
So we've, uh, the hotels and these are the four, it's just the four hotels?
These are just the four hotels, yes.
The Hampton, the Hilton, Fairfield and the Town Suites.
Correct.
Put in 55, for the nine months, 55,142 room nights.
Correct.
That is impressive.
It is.
Basically, with what were you, what the world's been going through, yeah.
I agree, I agree.
Are the hotel, uh, hoteliers that you talk with, are they, obviously that, that's lower than it has been, but are they, I don't wanna say happy, but uh, somewhat satisfied?
Yeah, they're, they're not happy and I mean, just as, you know, prior reports, everybody's pretty nervous about what's gonna be going on because traditionally you're, the, the soft market is, is through the winter, especially around here since we don't have the skiing and we don't have, you know, so this is going into our soft market and then also with the, everything with COVID around the, I mean, it, we'll have to wait and see where it levels out at, but it, it uh, I think they're, they're probably holding their breath right now to see where this lands. Uh, North West Region, um, Leavenworth, I just highlighted the three counties uh, closest to us and that, there's actually about 14 counties comprised in the northeast section of uh, Kansas that the state uh, considers uh, for our area. Um, and these figures were provided by the Tourism Economics. Each, every three years, I believe, are, the State Office of Tourism has uh, Tourism Economics do the um, economic impact studies and then they add these region um, economic impact studies that we can, that they uh, send out to all the um, area DMOs. But anyway, so I wanted to highlight kinda what Leavenworth County was showing as far as um, back when I was kinda going over what the state's total amount was, the 7.3 billion. The um, Leavenworth Counties, uh, they break it down into lodging, the food and beverage, retail, recreation, transport, and then our total of uh, 67.3 million for um, 2019. And like I said, the growth rate uh, across the board is, has been going up and that, so our growth rate was um, at 4.2%. So, um, down below then I highlighted the last few years, so you can kinda see that increase in growth rate and that, so overall, pretty good numbers. Um, real pleased with those as I'm sure the state's uh, pleased with those too, so. Um, our, our office, you know, like I said, we've been trying to really um, help locally and uh, we've still done some advertising, our print advertising like we normally do as far as in the larger magazines and in the state visitors guidebook and such, we have some that we just do every year and that, so. But we also try to work, uh, like I said, locally with like Main Street Association and the Chamber and, and just try and help promote our area as much as possible. Um, over the summer, we worked with uh, um, collaborated kinda with Main Street on one of their campaigns called Getting Back on Track and part of that, we um, helped sponsor some videos and the campaign itself and that, so we came away with three uh, videos by Toto TV, a drone coverage, um, a promotional vidage, video and then a, a longer video. And part of that campaign, we also did um, some amateur video shoot of the different businesses downtown and then we kinda did four little mini videos and that. Basically, it was what are those um, businesses doing to protect people when they come into their store and during the whole COVID deal and that, so I think it went real, over really well and, and I think that they appreciated and that. And the campaign itself, after the three month of it, you know, cause you would go into the uh, business shop and that and turn in your tickets and all that, um, that netted over about $95,000 spent downtown in just the three months that the campaign was, was running, so. Um, that was the people that actually turned in their receipts and that, so. Actually, it was, it was pretty fun and um, I think we, it turned out okay. But, and we continue to still work with uh, our other um, associations, our Northeast Kansas Association, I-70, KC RDA, um, we're all doing our um, our, our uh, Facebook posts, our newsletters associations, our event things that we're trying to send out, we're trying to make all of our events that are uh, COVID-friendly, either outside, they're, you know, those kinda things and so everybody's done posting that kinda stuff. We did do the KC um, kid-friendly trip this summer, which uh, was really well-received uh, through the KC RDA, Kansas City Regional Destination Alliance, and then we also are still doing the KC Coffee and uh, as a, an association, we hired a blogger that went around and it, um, actually went to each one of the locations and then blogged about it and so we got some additional um, uh, marketing off of that, so I think it was uh, it went over pretty well and I kinda highlighted that, I guess on the next, oh, I'm sorry, I should be saying next slide. I'm sorry. I just, I just thought of that, I'm like, oh, I'm supposed to be saying next slide.
He's doing, he's doing.
Thank you. Anyway, anyway, so um, the adventures in Co-, um, Coffee was what the blogger was uh, doing as far as the whole coffee trip and that, and so uh, we did receive some coverage on that as well for um, we've got Merry Weathers listed as our coffee shop and that, so um, I think that's going, and then we kinda broke the numbers down as far as how many likes and how many times it was posted and the comments and everything, so. And then right beside that, Meet Kansas, actually um, I, each year or, well, we actually meet every other month, so um, this will be my last year as president, I've been president of the association the last two years, so. Um, Hayes went, uh, Hayes in Goodland actually attended the Small Market Meetings Conference in French Lick, Indiana in October on behalf of Meet Kansas and uh, we had a booth there and then they also met with over 50 planners and that. So basically, when they meet with those planners, they take notes what that planner's interested in and then they'll bring them back to us and then we put them into our database and that and continually send out uh, notices to them, you know, like check Leavenworth out, this might fit this meeting that you're working with and et cetera. So it's uh, it was uh, actually French Lick does a really good job because I attended a tour, um, a group tour conference there in August, in late August, so they really know um, as far as uh, the whole wearing your mask, social distancing, they had their um, their hand sanitizers everywhere, they took your temperature every day, so, I mean, they really pulled it off, I think, and uh, because there's probably about 250 people there, so. Um, but it was done well and uh, anyway, we'll see if we come back with any uh, leads on that.
How did they choose French Lick, Indiana? That's the home of Larry Bird.
Yes, it is, the home of Larry Bird.
Did he make an appearance or anything?
Um, I think it has a lot to do with the group Travel Family, they are uh, from, out of Cleveland, Ohio area, and so I know they have a lot of contacts in their general vicinity and their marketing area and that, and they work with uh, French Lick probably quite often. I know French Lick has been um, sponsoring a lot of their things or a lot of the different shows that I go to, so I'm sure it's just relationship-driven.
Yeah, sure. That's interesting though, thank you. Good update there.
So tourism grants, uh, we still are doing our tourism grants, we handed out uh, over seven on February 1st and then two on August 1st and we will again, you know, we'll continue uh, forward with that program and that. A, a few things have canceled, obviously, and that, um, and a couple of them have been extended and uh, so we'll see how all of that uh, rolls out at the end of the year here and that, but social media-wise, we have over 7,000 followers between our four main social media outlets that we use, uh, Facebook, Twitter, Pinterest and Instagram. Um, our website uh, has had over 214,000 page views, our unique views are right at about 48,282. So we still continue, I mean, the USP, USB and those are still our top pages that are accessed and that, and the, hey, but our calendar of events finally, finally made it in there, so I was really happy to, to see that, so. Anyway, um, our visitors guidebook, we distributed over 6,500 books this year and what we're going to do, because we normally print between 15,000 and 17,000 every year, what we'll do um, going into next year and that, I've been working with the Sandy at the Times, basically we're gonna update our digital version with our new dates and everything, our, our closings updates, so basically we'll update the digital version, we're going to keep our printed version and just probably have some volunteers help us put stickers on the front that say, um, you know, 2020 Visitors Guidebook and 2021, and then we'll insert like our um, events page or something like that because we have, obviously we have several thousand left down in the basement and we don't wanna just recycle them, so.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, print ads, we have still placed about 20 ads, like I was talking about earlier of the different uh, magazines and, and uh, things that we keep on a regular basis and that, just to keep the word out there, but our distribution is still 1.6 million with those 20 ads, so I think we've done a, a good job of trying to get more bang for our, our money and that, so. Um, online advertising, we do have uh, the digital campaigns running with the state uh, on the state's website and then also we have a meetings uh, campa-, meetings uh, cert-, um, SEO, uh, search engine, marketing campaign going for meetings and then um, a couple of billboards that we placed earlier, uh, and that, so we've had impressions as far as that goes at about 2.3 million. Um, our e-newsletter calendar, we've uh, still have about 1,500 contacts emailed uh, twice a month on that and then um, I don't know if you've all seen it yet, but the van has a new wrap.
Cool.
So, very excited, um, I can say that the, without the wrap going up on the windows and on the back, it is a little bit easier to see out, so it's, it's nice to uh, to be able to kinda see that, yeah, so it's, it works, it's, it's really nice and I, I love the design, I hope you do as well.
I love the dinosaur.
I know.
And the bridge.
Yeah, the bridge looks, yeah, the bridge is cool.
The bridge is, is always, yeah. Dinosaur is cool.
The dinosaur, yeah. Trying to make it look more friendly and, and fun and, and uh, so, yeah.
The dinosaur is walking through Leavenworth.
Right, he's going after the bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Very good.
Anyway, so yeah, I was real happy with that. Um, our calendar of events, uh, like I said, we are trying to update it to, all the time. I just did this report, you know, a couple of days ago and two things have already changed on it, so that's, I mean, just kinda shows how things um, change already, so obviously that's the city Christmas parade and then the Christmas carol at the Hollywood, so um, a couple of the other uh, events that are still going on around town, obviously our, our businesses are still open downtown and uh, encourage you to shop local and, and uh, help them out through the holiday season, so with that, uh, I wanna say uh, Happy Thanksgiving and Happy Holidays.
Cause the downtown, they'll have a big shopping day, is it the day after Thanksgiving or is that that Saturday?
That Black Friday is the day after, so I'm sure that there'll be some sales that day as well in town, but I think the big day, the big day for us is going to be Shop Small Saturday, which is the 28th.
Yeah, okay, good.
That is a figure.
Yeah.
So, any good, good, very good presentation, I always look forward to your PowerPoint and so it's fantastic.
Thank you.
And, and so do we have any questions or comments for Ms. Lee?
I, I just would like to say that, you know, I thought it was interesting that Americans, the Americans, which we know that, Americans wanna go someplace that's safe and contrary to a lot of the emails we were getting early on, that people wouldn't wanna come here because it's.
Right.
They wanna come where it's safe.
Yes.
And we frequent places that are safe and we promote them and I think everybody should, so.
Good, very, very good point. Any other questions or comments for Ms. Lee?
Very good.
No, just my best to your staff, really, great presentation, doing very, very well and, and some very difficult circumstances, so keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Christie.
Thank you, Christie.
And our fourth agenda item is a little more mundane, but important. Review proposed changes sewer and grease trap maintenance, so.
It's hard to follow.
As I said, important, but maybe not as exciting as uh, the presentation we just got, but.
Making me excited.
It's hard to follow a class act like that.
I'm only, I'm only, only kidding. Hello, Mr. McDonald, how are you doing?
Uh, it's a, it's a fine evening, sir.
Yes.
To talk about our, our subject this evening, uh, I've uh, asked the wastewater plant to send me uh, some pictures of the grease problems that can exist in our sewers and I, I think Taylor will run through them a few times, we won't leave them on there for the duration, it's, it just doesn't need to happen.
Sure.
But this is uh, something that we've been working on as a staff for some time, uh, is to uh, improve the way the city approaches grease traps and uh, some other uh, kinda mundane sewer details and we are proposing uh, some changes to the city code to address some, compliance is perhaps a difficult word, but uh, we're, we're having some. But uh we're we're having some problems getting things uh better, I guess. Oh, there we go, now we're talking. Uh the the pictures basically show uh grease that is downstream of uh restaurants or something. This is not the, there are problems with grease in homeowner homes or apartments and things, this is not that problem. This is failed or non-existent uh grease traps.
In in commercial facilities.
It's a real problem, this stuff, when it gets it gets baked on there, it's tough, you can't hardly blast it off with the high pressure water.
Wow.
But the uh uh this kinda relates back to the stormwater management program we've discussed several times in the last year. Uh one of the, well, the structure of that program is uh the the six minimum control measures uh that are required. And part of that is the illicit discharge detection and elimination as well as uh pollution prevention and good housekeeping. And KDHE identified uh that it uh having a grease trap program is way to get those points. And we had discussed that we would be bringing back uh a formal uh creation of a of a of a more aggressive grease trap inspection uh program. The uh interestingly enough, the plumbing code does require uh installation of uh and maintenance of grease interceptors or grease traps at food service establishments. This is not a new requirement, uh it is uh it is what restaurants expect uh to have. Uh we have worked the last five years trying to track down restaurants uh that don't have them. Uh and that was a fairly uh interesting exercise. However, as of in uh two thousand nineteen, uh we believe that uh all restaurants or all places that should have some level of grease trap or grease interceptor currently have them. I think the number is sixty-seven uh locations within the city of Leavenworth. Uh there is a summary in the uh after the policy report uh that we sent to the state as part of our stormwater plan. But it summarizes uh kind of our actions in two thousand nineteen for for the grease traps. We've seen the pictures, uh and it looks like it can be bad and it can be. Some typical problems you get from a grease buildup in the sewer line, uh the the sewer will back up. It'll back up into the the building the grease comes from, it'll back up into other buildings that may be associated with that building. And sometimes it comes out onto the ground and that needs to be cleaned up. Uh oftentimes, we'll see blocked manholes or uh a blocked sewer line that causes the wastewater with the grease and everything else that flows out onto the ground and uh it may enter the creeks or streams, which causes uh some permit problems. We have to notify the state when that happens. And then there's there's a cost of having our crews come out to deal with these large uh grease problems. Uh I asked uh wastewater and this evening, we may uh have on the uh on the call this evening, Mike Hooper, who wrote most of this, uh Tim Guardato, our wastewater superintendent, and Hal Burdette, our chief building inspector, were all involved in this discussion. So if you have questions of them, uh we can, we can ask them. But you can see that ultimately, the grease in the line restricts the capacity of the line. And this is a particular problem in areas that have an inflow and infiltration problem. Uh you are not getting near the flow in those lines that you need to, which creates other sewer problems. As I noted, uh compliance uh is our goal. The overflows that reach the creek or stream or an underground stormwater system are generally uh required to be reports reported to KDHE as a sanitary sewer overflow. We post a notice of that on our webpage and we do our best to clean it up and we take water quality samples, that sort of thing. I would say uh if you ask your regulators what level is acceptable, they will say there should never be any sewer spill ever. Uh they think they recognize that is not actually a rational decision. But I can tell you, if they see that there's a lot of them and the city's not taking action, then uh if they uh see that in our reports, then they may want to do an inspection or question uh how serious the city's taking the problem. Uh we've so far worked well with KDHE and our programs. We really started trying to get a grip on the the whole grease trap thing back in two thousand twelve after the EPA came to town to help us. And the uh uh we instituted the the kind of aggressive plumbing inspections, make sure you have them. And then we created a uh record-keeping environment where we're not asking for a lot, we're asking for a record. Was this thing inspected daily or weekly? And how often is it maintained? Uh some evidence of of somebody pumps it out or you have it, some service comp, whatever it may be. Uh it's mixed at best, the responses that we get, because there's no uh there there's no penalty for non-compliance. I think the totals in two thousand and nineteen were, after several repeat visits and phone calls, we received reasonably complete records from twenty-two of the then seventy-two establishments. And uh they were full of really interesting things. If you have a box that's one through thirty-one days on the left and twelve months across the top and every box has an X and it and an initial in it, it means they inspected on February twenty-ninth, they inspected April thirty-first, May thirty-first. They inspected on days that they're not even open. So that uh we've seen them uh come in where the guy just uh takes takes the sheet and draws a line for each month and says inspected. And it does that for twelve months and it's all done obviously on the same day. So there there's lots of things that that are out there. We uh we and we do get uh as many of the institutions that we deal with take it seriously. But it's it's kind of interesting to see what uh what happens. It costs money. If you're running a small business, uh having to service your grease trap, it's a cost. You may wanna put off two or three or five hundred dollars for a month or two. Uh and that can create problems for both the business and the the city. So what we're proposing to do is kind of expand on uh on this. Uh we do contact grease trap owners annually with a letter reminding that they have one. We need and we would like copies of their uh maintenance and inspection records. But we would like to require that they have an annual grease trap permit and a fee uh to have the thing. And secondly, uh that there's a requirement for the maintenance and inspection records uh to be made available on reasonable notice sort of thing. Uh and along with that, of course, there needs to be some level of of a penalty. And we identified several types of actions that we can do as part of an enforcement thing. You can uh consider pursuing under the existing city codes, uh there's a nuisance or some other appropriate section that they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing and they're creating a nuisance that's uh citable in municipal court. Uh you can revoke their device permit, which uh may not intimidate some of the small ones, but the larger restaurant chains take that very seriously. Uh disconnect the water service if we get zero compliance or we don't think we're getting anywhere. So without water, they've got a real problem running a restaurant.
Yeah.
Uh if we spend our time and money and and equipment to clean up a grease caused spill, we ought to be billing the the perpetrator, if you will, of that, if we can identify it. And uh impose some sort of a late fee for uh failure to submit complete records. Uh we worked on this some time back and we've included uh the the kind of some language. It has the old code numbers in it since we revised the city code numbers since we did the work. The sec- the the language is the same, the section numbers are all messed up. Uh but the basic proposal is, uh staff proposes an annual permit fee uh be due on July first of each year for uh a re-institution with the grease trap or interceptor and a uh hundred dollar fine for failing to renew the permit or failing to uh or failure or incomplete records uh being submitted to the city uh on an annual basis. Uh we would not do this in a vacuum. Uh we expect to uh to kind of get this language together if the commission uh believes that this is a worthy exercise. We would have a public information meeting. Uh we would uh note that the the fees are there because we're serious about this. This is a, this is something that uh we believe is important for the community. And uh the reason for the July first target date is we worked with the city clerk's office to find a a slow time in the year uh when it didn't conflict with dog licenses or contractor licensing or something like that. So that July first was identified as as a date, that may change at this point. And we may have this in effect prior to uh July first, the initial year, but our target day right now is July first. And uh I will do my best to answer, uh oh, one other thing, I'm sorry. There was a couple other uh vagueness sections in the city code about who's responsible for the sewer service line to the main line. Uh the city has always held that property owners are responsible for the sewer line and the connection of the sewer line to the main line. Uh depending on uh how stressed you are when you read the language, you may not think that is the correct interpretation. Now, we would like to clarify that, that that is in fact the correct interpretation. And there's some language uh in here that we prepared that we could address that. So if uh we'll do our best to answer questions uh that you have. If we move forward with this, you would expect to see, in my mind at least, uh uh either at a study session or if we think it's a pretty good piece of work, maybe as a a first consideration as part of adopting ordinance to address uh this matter.
Will this uh information go out to um the businesses then, so they are aware of it before it comes back for?
Oh, yes, yes ma'am, this is uh, there will be communications with the sixty-seven and probably a few others. Basically, they know this is something we've been talking about for several years. We have uh not moved forward with it in any meaningful manner other than persistent kind of hounding them for copies of their records. That's when we get the weird records come in.
Okay.
But yes, this is, the public information meeting, there'll be uh some written contact with the the addresses that have uh grease traps.
That's good.
Other questions or comments from commissioners?
Uh Mr. McDonald, I I would say the largest restaurant or food service facility in town by far has to be the federal prison. Do they, does their wastewater come through us or is that handled separately?
Fort Leavenworth and uh the VA and the Bureau of Prisons all come to the cities. These are generally not where we have our problems. Uh that there are occasionally really weird things that happen out there, but it's not consistently our federal institution. They might have a problem periodically uh and uh but they're they're not the main one. It's, it tends to be restaurant focused in addition to all the the thousands of homes that dump all their bagged grease and hemorrhaged grease. And you dump that down your sewer and you think that you're you're fine, it goes down there, finds some roots to hang on to and the next thing you know, you've got a clogged sewer. And uh that's not the grease trap we're talking about. But uh I think part of this effort will be uh uh a way to educate homeowners that don't make your bad problem worse by dumping your grease down the drain.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments for Mr. McDonald? I I had a question on and and I think uh, you know, an annual permit is good. Um in terms of the twenty-five dollars for the fee, what it, what is the, what does that twenty-five dollars cover? I mean, in terms of, in your mind, what would it cover?
Basically, it gets you into our records, uh with the a name of your business and the responsible party. And yeah, we will send you routinely the uh request for records and then a copy of your inspection reports. Similar to, we have, if you're an electrical contractor, we know, uh you know, we have that information. Or if you're, if you have a dog, we know.
It's like a registration program, which I think is, which I think is really, really good. I was just questioning, you know, I think we need a fee, but it's twenty-five dollars annually about about right or um?
Yeah, we al- we already do uh inspection with our forces as they are. This is not an attempt to generate revenue, if you will.
Sure, right.
I think the cost of sending a couple of letters and maintaining that level of record uh is is within the realm of the twenty-five dollars.
Okay.
The penalties for
Yeah.
for some of the bad stuff that you can do, that's a different story. We do have costs associated with with that.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
Mr. McDonald, Mr. Kramer, are we looking for a consensus on this to move forward or is this just information?
We're just looking for a consensus that you support the program and then we'll start to put together the next steps, the public info meetings, drafting the language, updating the ordinance numbers and stuff like that.
Okay.
So uh let's see if we have a consensus. Uh Commissioner Wilson, you wanted, you you wish to move forward with this program?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonhard?
Yes.
Commissioner Preisinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowder?
Yes.
And I, as the mayor, say yes. So we have a unanimous consensus and I thought it was very well-written, the policy report, and it's in, it's important. Um and so thank you, Mr. McDonald, Mr. Hooper and Mr. Burdette for uh working on this. And I guess we'll see you in the not-too-distant future on First Consideration.
That's our plan, sir.
Okay.
Good job, Mark, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's the last, the fourth and last agenda item for the study session. So as we always do, we're gonna go around the horn and I'm gonna start with uh Mr. Kramer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do have a couple items to share with uh the commission and and the public. Um earlier today, we made the decision to close the Riverfront Community Center to um any events or groups larger than ten people. We do have a very few groups, such as the lap swimmers, that we've uh learned over the last six months how to accommodate that, exceeding our social distance requirements and and keeping them safe. We have some track walkers in the morning, a very few, that we believe we can do safely. But I think that uh for all the reasons discussed tonight and in conversations with our health department, that um these large events, um it's just not the time and place that we've done that. Additionally, Haymarket Square um has been closed for the rest of the year. I am happy to say that we didn't have any pending reservations. So we uh we were in talks with a few groups who had applied. So um you know, with the farmer's market being done and a lot of the summer stuff, I don't think it's very impactful. But regardless of a COVID plan or anything like that, we're just gonna close Haymarket Square for the rest of the year for reservations. Which then leads me into um one item. Um we did not technically have a commission vote on the Christmas parade, but we did have sort of a consensus. Um it sort of uh stands out a little bit right now, so I wanted to get some commission feedback on um what we should do with that. I know we just talked about it last week, but it is coming up uh shortly.
So would you like that feedback uh now?
That would be, yeah, we don't need a vote.
Right.
If there's sort of some some thoughts of three or so commissioners, that would probably be sufficient.
Sure. Mr. Wilson, what do you think uh in terms of the the Christmas parade? Um in terms of proceeding with it or taking an action basically to cancel it because of what's going on with COVID-nineteen?
Yes, definitely with COVID on the rise, I think uh the city should definitely take responsibility and avoid mass gatherings from our end. So I support the decision of canceling the parade.
Thank you. Commissioner Leonhard?
Yeah, cancel.
Commissioner Preisinger?
I don't wanna be the Grinch, but uh yeah, I I think it's the prudent thing to do.
Commissioner Bowder?
I I agree, I agree.
Unfortunately, it's just, it's just the sign of the times and with this COVID-nineteen health crisis worsening, worsening um very dramatically, I don't think we have a choice, so um I support canceling it.
Okay. Uh I do have two just other quick updates. Next Tuesday night, um our assistant city manager will um sort of preview and unveil our business grant program for our Spark funds from the county. We, um to date, as of today, we've given eight grants to community organizations, our nonprofits, um two of which we heard from tonight. And then um Taylor Tetter has done a great job putting together a business grant program. Uh the objective is low hurdles, get money out quickly, it's a fillable online form, um a lot of just uh click buttons. Um and so we plan to get that out next week and then we'll put it live next Wednesday morning, uh the morning after he gives the presentation. And then the final update is last week, the city commission approved a resolution for the city to apply to a county call for projects uh for road chair. And we selected Michael's Road from Tonganoxie Road to one hundred and sixty-seventh. To our great surprise, uh this week, the county paved that. Um it was on their pavement schedule and so sort of fortunately, it's done. So I officially pulled that out of the call for projects today from the county, but since the commission did pass a resolution, I wanted to give you that update. That's all I have.
Um in terms of the 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 Christmas tree with the lights on down, you know, behind Haymarket Square, will we still continue with that?
Absolutely, so we'll light up the the mayor's Christmas tree, they'll do the full decorations, they'll have the radio station that you can tune into to listen uh to the music that plays along with the music, so we will, we will do that.
And we've done some Christmas decorations, at least on Delaware, um and we get, what will we be doing?
Main street.
Yeah. So they, our, our contractor put those up, the Thursday and Friday after the Veterans Day parade. And so those are up and up for the year.
Okay. So we're not being complete Grinches?
No.
What is the date when the, is it the fourth, when they turn on the lights down there? Have you set the date?
We were going to do it the day before the, the parade. So I guess we could stick with that or do it on the fourth. That was.
Yeah, whatever. Yeah.
But there's no presentation. They're just going to go.
No formal event. They'll, they'll be on and we encourage people to drive through and take a look.
So Mayor Griswold's not going to be down there by himself.
It's one of those years. Once in a hundred years. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, yes. I had a quick statement I wanted to make at the end. Like I said, as COVID is on the rise and we're approaching these holidays, I know many are tempted to travel and visit family members. I definitely strongly encourage individuals to avoid mass gatherings, practice social distance, and if you don't have to leave your home, please stay home. This is a tough season for everyone, but with the help of God, each one of us to our part, God will bring us to this. And happy holidays.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Leonhard?
Yeah, we just need, yeah, to be, try to be a little bit more safer. And if we can just get through this, you know, hopefully by the beginning of next year, you know, we won't have to, maybe things will be a little bit better. But yeah, the social distancing is really important, as well as the mask and hand sanitizing and hand washing. Because, like I said, I've been saying this before, you can't just do, pick one of them and not do the others. Because we've seen the rise with the social gatherings. I mean, you can all have masks on, but stand next to each other for four or five hours. Well, that's not good either. So just need to be safe over the holiday seasons and try to, I know everyone's tired of it. I know we all are. But we just want to get through this and want to have a healthy year next year.
Yes. Thank you. Commissioner Preisinger?
I have two things. One, I know that the police chief under his powers was able to do a ninety-day parking permit in front of restaurants downtown who did not have off-street parking. I think those ninety days have expired. And I'm wondering if he can designate to those restaurants for curbside pickup, those that don't have off-site, off-street parking to help out those restaurants for, you know, another ninety-day period or whatever the maximum that he's allowed to do.
That would be nice.
Extend it again for them.
Sure. I will look into that tomorrow to make sure that he can do that. And if not, I'll bring it back to the commission as soon as possible. But I believe he has authority to do it.
Yeah.
But I'll double check.
It's within his authority to do it immediately.
Yeah, absolutely.
I got one other thing. It's in the seventh county, Kansas City metro area, which Leavenworth is part of this region, the COVID rate has been growing exponentially. Even Jefferson County and all, you look at all the surrounding counties that touch Leavenworth, which are Atchison, Jefferson, Douglas, Johnson, Wyandotte, and Platte County, every one of them has mitigation procedures in place, whether it be mask-wearing or following the governor's executive order. Leavenworth is the only county that does it. We're an absolute island here by ourselves. Researchers today at the National Institute of Health and CDC estimate that approximately fifteen percent of all U.S. population has contracted COVID, whether they're symptomatic or not symptomatic. And that's been over the last eight and a half months. Now they're estimating in the next seventy-five days, another fifteen percent will contract it. They say it's just, you know, it's, it's, you know, getting, getting worse.
In some states, it's at that rate right now, like, like Wisconsin.
Going back to the people, thoughts were, remember in Sweden, when we started out, Sweden, they didn't do anything, social distancing. They said, no, the herd immunity, take care of itself. Sweden now, their public health officers are, they actually have been said, we made a mistake. We've got a major problem. Sweden now has the highest death rate of any country in the world from COVID. And their people are even admitting that mistake. The AMA, American Medical Association, ANA, American Nurses Association, and AHA, American Hospital Association, all are recommending mask mandates. These are medical professionals, not a bunch of QAnon or pseudo-scientists. These are real people that do the research. They're the people on the front lines. Talk to any nurse, talk to any doctor, look at any hospital here in the Kansas City area, anywhere in the United States. They are overloaded. So any of these things that say, no, let it run its course, we have, I think action needs to be taken. Tomorrow morning, the Board of County Commissioners has an agenda item on COVID mitigation measures. I hope they take some decisive action. If they do not, I propose we, the city commission, meet immediately to determine how we should proceed based on what the commission, Board of County Commissioners does tomorrow morning. That's my recommendation to, and looking for some support, my thoughts on that. And look for some support from the other commissioners. It is bad.
Thank you for that, for that rundown. It's very illuminating and something we as leaders, elected officials, leaders of the city of Leavenworth must take very, very seriously. And so I appreciate that feedback, Commissioner Preisinger, Preisinger. And I too will be interested to see what happens tomorrow at the county commission meeting. And depending on what happens there, you know, we, as the mayor, I could call a special meeting sometime in the not, not-too-distant future, in the very near future. So we'll just have to wait and see. I think we should wait and see at least until tomorrow morning. Commissioner Bowder?
I agree with that. I want to talk about something else. Okay. I know, I know, you know, we are, we are overwhelmed with COVID, but I want to look to the future a little bit. This afternoon, Mary Dwyer and I were asked to speak to the Leavenworth County Human Services Council about the future of transportation in our county. And it's, it's, it's exciting to see our city moving in the future. Obviously, this is something that will happen in the fall, hopefully. The Guidance Center has taken a big part of, of this project and they will, they will be running with it. So they are applying for the grant. And we're applying for a grant for, to help with transportation. Mary Dwyer is doing an excellent job of getting this ready.
Great.
And this will be done next week, I believe. It's, it's due next week. So look, look ahead to the future. We're, we're going to be, after that, I'm sure, I'm sure we'll probably be having public meetings, public input on, because there were a lot of questions today on little details. And we aren't talking about details. Now we're talking about a program that's a pilot program that we're going to try next year and see, see where it goes. So I'm excited about the future. And I have, I have friends who are in the KU study for vaccines that work in the medical field. And I think I, I want to be positive about it. We need to be as, we need to be helping our healthcare workers out, keeping our hospitals from being overrun, keeping our health department from being overrun, which is happening right now. And, and keeping people from, from dying and being very sick. So, but once that's over with, we've got a lot of work to do. Thank you.
And we do have this gap of, of months between now and the vaccine.
We can, we can work with it now. Yeah.
Unfortunately, I mean, that's a challenge.
Right. We can work with that.
And the thing about, you know, the hospital and the ICU facilities and the beds and everything are one thing, but the staffing in terms of the, the ICU nurses and
Yes.
respiratory therapist and everything, that, that is a concern that I hear from health professionals. If this thing keeps going in the wrong direction.
As schools close, parents have to stay home with their children. So they're, they are short. Everybody is short. The nursing homes are really short. So.
Commissioner Wilson, I provided some feedback based on Commissioner Preisinger's comments on the COVID-19. So was Commissioner Bowder. Do you have anything to say at this point on that matter?
No, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Leonhard?
No, not, no, not at this time. Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I agree with what he said.
We'll see what happens tomorrow. Yeah.
For those, for those comments.
Yeah.
I don't think there's anything else. If there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and conclude tonight's commission study session.